Pleasant good evening to my brothers and sisters on this platform this evening. We give God praise, we give him thanks, we give him glory and honour, which is due to his magnificent name. As we gather here this evening to study God's word. You know, in Psalm 119 verse 105, it tells us that the Lord's word is a lamp to our feet and a light to our path. So it's important that we come together to study God's word. This evening I'll take over for Sister Marcin for quite a while, but she wasn't feeling so well this morning. She will join us. We thank God and we continue to pray for her healing. And we thank God that Sister Kusel is here with us. She was able to reach down on time. We thank God for all his mercies towards us, everyone who is here this evening on this platform. All the families, all the friends gathered this evening. We say, welcome, welcome to our first Bible study session for the new year 2023. Ain't God good to bring us here once more? So this evening, without further ado, we want to begin. We will have an opening song. What a friend we have in Jesus. All our sins and griefs to bear. What a privilege to carry. Everything to God in prayer. Oh, what peace we often forfeit. All what need less than we bear. All because we do not carry. Everything to God in prayer. Have we trials and temptations? Is there trouble anywhere? We should never be discouraged. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Can we find a friend so faithful? Who will all our sorrows share? Jesus knows of every weakness. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Are we weak and heavy laden? Come but with our Lord again. Precious Savior, sail or refuge. Duck it to the Lord in prayer. Do thy friends' despise forsake thee. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Innocence heal, take and shield thee. Thou wilt find his soul is there. Amen. Sister Walcott will continue in opening prayer for us.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. A blessed evening to each and every one on the platform. What a friend we have in Jesus. All our sins and griefs to bear. What a privilege to carry everything to God in prayer. Heavenly Father, I come before you this evening, O Lord God. And I come with no strength or no power of my own. But I come this evening, O Lord God, because of your grace and your mercies this evening. But I come thanking you, O Lord Jesus, for all that you have done for us. What you're doing and what you're still about to do. Because you tell me, O Lord God, that everything, we must give you praise and we must give you thanks. But I come thanking you, O Lord God, for the Bible sessions that has passed and gone. Father, I thank you, O Lord God, for the ones that is about to come. Because I know, O Lord Jesus, that you are in this. Not for us, O Lord God, but to build us stronger and to make us a better people. Father, I thank you this evening, O Lord God, for this platform where we can come and learn all about you, O Lord Jesus. Because you tell me this evening, O Lord God, that your word is a light unto our feet, a lamp unto our feet, and a light unto our pathway, O Lord God. So fathers, we come this evening, O Lord God, I pray we go to open our understanding. Open our mind, O Lord Jesus, so that we'll be able to learn more of you, O Lord God. So that, O Lord Jesus, when we go out there, O Lord God, we'll be able to win souls for your kingdom, O Jesus. Father, you be with us this evening, O Lord God. Father, you be with us in every aspect, O Lord Jesus, of this Bible study this evening. Father, we have something that is troubling us, O Lord God. Help us, O Lord God, to bring it to the ones that have the know-how, so that they'll be able to explain to us better, so that we'll be better able to understand everything that we read, O Lord God. Because I know, O Lord Jesus, most of the times before when I read, Father, most of the times I never used to understand what I read. But through this medium, O Lord God, I have a little more understanding of what I am reading, Jesus. And I thank you for this platform this evening. I thank you for the one that you gave the inspiration to to start this Bible class, O Lord God. Father, I come bringing Sister Marcin before you this evening, O Lord Jesus. Whatever the situation is with her this evening, I pray we go to lay your healing hands upon her, O Lord God. Because you tell me this evening that healing is your children's bread. And by your stripes, we are healed this evening. So you touch her this evening, O Lord God. Father, you touch her from the top of her head to the sole of her feet this evening, O Lord Jesus. Father, you bless and you keep her. Bless and keep her this evening, O Lord Jesus. Father, Sister Kusel, Sister Krista Christine, Brother Karen, oh blessed Jesus. I bring all of them before you this evening, O Lord God. Father, I thank you for the ministry that you have placed them in this evening, O Lord Jesus. Because you see, at that point in time, we really did need that ministry this evening, O Lord God. Father, I thank you for them, O Lord Jesus. I pray I go to continue to bless them. I pray I go to continue to keep them, O Lord Jesus. Father, I watch over them as the days come and go. Cover their defenseless heads this evening, O Lord Jesus. Father, you know everything concerning. You know what they stand in need of this evening. Father, Sister Kusel and Sister Christine, O Lord God. Father, you bless them on their job, O Lord God. Father, you keep them, O Lord Jesus. Have them to be a shining light to their coworkers this evening, O Lord Jesus. Oh blessed Savior, you bless and you keep them this evening. But I might consider Mike this evening, O Lord Jesus. Father, I pray I go to bless them. I pray I go to keep them, O Lord Jesus. Father, I keep them, continue doing the good work that they are doing with their children, O Lord God. Father, but I might this evening, I bring him before you, O Lord Jesus. Strong leadership qualities this evening, O Lord God. Father, I pray this evening you're going to help him to take up that mantle, O Lord God. Help him to take up that mantle this evening, O Lord Jesus, pastor, reverend, whatever it may be. Help him to take it up this evening, O Lord Jesus. Father, I pray I go to stand with him. I pray I go to be with him, O Lord Jesus. Father, you bless and you keep that family, O Lord Jesus. Because you tell me the family that prays together stays together this evening, O Lord God. Father, every one of us on this platform this evening, Sister Ford, that opened the meeting this evening, O Lord Jesus. Father, you know everything concerning, huh? You know what she stand in need of this evening, O Lord God. I pray, O Lord God, you're going to bless her household, O Lord God. Father, bless her food basket this evening, O Lord Jesus. Father, you bless and you keep her, O Lord Jesus. Father, the offspring of her body this evening. You bless each and every one of them, even the one that is not near, O Lord God. Father, you reach out and you touch him because you tell me that there is no distance in prayer this evening, O Lord God. You touch him this evening, O Lord Jesus. Father, you be with Sister Ford. You bless her, O Lord God. You bless her food basket, O Lord Jesus. Oh blessed Savior. Father, every other member that is on this platform this evening. Sister Nareen, Sister Ford, Sister... Oh blessed Jesus, you bless them this evening, O Lord God. You bless and you keep them, Lord. Father, you know what I want to tell you this evening. You know everything concerning me this evening, O Lord God. Father, I leave everything in your hands this evening. And I pray I go to bless this Bible study this evening. Bless it in a mighty way this evening, O Lord God. Father, open our eyes, open our hearts, and open our minds to receive whatever is to come forth this evening, O Lord God. Father, you bless and you keep us. In Jesus Almighty's name I pray. Amen and amen and amen. There was taught us when we prayed to see our Father who art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from all evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen and amen and amen. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you, Sister Dolores. Thank you. And we will go straight into our study session, which will be conducted at this time by Sisters Pamela and Kusel Mike. Over to you, sisters. God bless you all as we sit and listen.
Pleasant good afternoon to all of my sisters and my brothers in the Lord. We are thankful for another opportunity to meet, to study the word of God. And we... While we appreciate all that was done last year, for this year, as we have been saying in church, we're doing a new thing. And I hope that that would mean that we will get some more persons contributing to our conversations. Because we don't all know everything, and sometimes you have an idea. And if you share it, then we'll be able to talk and decide, you know, come to a conclusion on it. We want people to participate in the conversations. That being said, today we are going to start with to talk about David, and we are going from what we know. We start with what we know, the account that we know, and then we'll go further in the weeks to come. So this week we are starting with the account of David and Bathsheba. Because that's one of the things that everybody goes through when they hear David. Oh, David was the one who did this and did that and the other. But there are a whole lot of things about David that we need to study and learn from. When this account started in 2 Samuel chapter 11, one of the things I noticed, because every time you read, you see something new. So what I noticed was that at no time was there something in that chapter that suggested that Bathsheba had any say, that she said anything. There were no words that were accounted for as to Bathsheba saying this or Bathsheba making a decision. What was done was all on David. So most of what we're going to talk about today would be about David. We're not going to dwell on Bathsheba. We're going to look at David and what lessons we can learn from this account. And at the beginning of the chapter, when I was reading, I paid specific attention to that first verse in 2 Samuel chapter 11, where it says, "And it came to pass, after the year was expired, at the time when kings go forth to battle." And that at the time when kings go forth to battle, that David sent Joab and his servants with him, and all Israel, and they destroyed the children of Ammon and besieged Rabbah. But David tarried still at Jerusalem. That line that says, "At the time when kings go forth to battle", because when I was looking at that, I did a little research, and what was... The reason for kings going out to battle is that when the battle was won, that win that they would have gotten in that battle was related, or they would say it was the king who won the battle. It wasn't just, it wasn't the army. They would say David won the battle. So if he sent Joab out and Joab won the battle, then they would say it's Joab. So there was a reason for kings going to battle. They didn't stay home. And that is where the problem started. David stayed home. He did not go to battle with the rest of his army. And that's when his trouble, should we say trouble, started. Because that's when he was able to sleep and get up and walk, and then he was able to see Bathsheba, and then things started happening in his mind. Which reminded me that sometimes when we don't do what we are supposed to do as Christians, we open ourselves out for things, other things happen. So when we stay away from that closeness, that relationship with God, we expose ourselves to getting involved in things that we're not supposed to get involved in. So that was the first thing, you know, when you read it over, you start picking up things. So that was the first thing that I picked up and I read it over, that he was not where he was supposed to be. And that's when the temptations came. Also... Yes, Mr.? Also the fact that he knew that Bathsheba was married, and it didn't bother him. He still sent, yeah, it didn't bother him. He still sent, and he called her, and he did what he had to do. Because power, as far as I looked at it, I may be wrong, but I felt that power was beginning to get to his head. So he, because he knew that she could not tell him no. He sent, he called her, and he did what he had to do. Power can corrupt, no matter who you are. And especially when you have exposed yourself and you have fallen away from that relationship with God, and you have power. It can be a very dangerous thing, and that could go for anybody, yeah? Anybody, whoever you are, whether you feel that you're the best Christian or the best pastor or the best whoever you are. That power, if you allow that to take the lead to be all that you think about, you forget about that the fact that God is the one who is in charge that can lead you down a path that you don't really want to go. So I think that is what happened to David. Because he was not doing what he was supposed to do, and because he felt, well, okay, I am the king, I can do whatever I want. He found himself in a situation that he should not have been in. And because of that, because he found himself in that situation, and he slept with Bathsheba, and then finding out that she's pregnant, he knows how to try to find ways to cover up what he had done. And he made many attempts to try to get Uriah to go in to his wife and to sleep with her, so that he can take that responsibility as the father of the child. There is a verse that I looked at also, where it says that... Just a minute, eh? Right. And David said to Uriah, that's verse 8, "Go down to thy house and wash thy feet." And what I found out, that word "feet" that is translated there in the Hebrew language, it means to wash your genitals, all right? And that meant when you wash your genitals, you go, you be with your wife, all right? And his reason wasn't that he really wanted Uriah to go home to his wife. He wanted to cover up his sin. And that happens to a lot of people. You get yourself in a situation, and when you realize that you are going to be exposed, you find all kinds of reasons to cover up that exposure. And it goes on and on. You cover that one, and you have to cover another one, and you have to cover another one. So David tried to cover up, but he could not cover it up from God, who is able to see all things. And so he sent the prophet, and the prophet came in a way... He didn't come and tell him, "Yeah, you did so, so, so." He told him it in a parable. So David condemned himself. He condemned himself, and he said, "Well, who's this man who will do something like this, that will take the lamb and give it, and the person just had one, and he had so many?" All right? And he, in fact, passed his own sentence, okay? In the end, David repented and all of that. But that's just a little synopsis of the story that we are going, the account that we are going to discuss today. Take over, Kusel.
All right. So, yeah, we had a little synopsis from our studies with Bathsheba. We know what role David had to play in the entire situation. And I know we're not trying to get too much into David before all of this, because as Sister Mike rightfully said, this is one of the accounts that we go to when we think of David. The other one would be the Goliath, the Goliath. I think that's the one that everybody, whether you believe or not, that's the one that everybody knows, the David and Goliath story account, right? But we're starting with this Bathsheba account because, not just because it's familiar, but because I think we need to start at the quote-unquote "the end", so we can appreciate where he came from. And while Sister Mike was speaking, I just wanted, I just wrote down a couple of things, because I don't want this account to go over our heads, because it tells us a couple of things. It tells us first of all that the battle of sin begins in our mind. It begins with a thought. And sometimes it's harmless, though, no. Sometimes the thought is not the sinner. It's just where it begins. It's where the seed is planted, right? And a lot of times we don't realize how powerful our minds are. We just, I mean, out of, literally out of sight, sometimes really out of mind. The brain sits in your skull there, and you're using it to think, but you barely even consider it. And that is the place where every of our misdoings begins, right? It begins, and those things usually bubble up when we are secretly dissatisfied, unhappy with what is going on with us. And sometimes you're not even conscious about the mood that you're going through, right? Sometimes it's just a little event, external event, that would trigger some kind of jealousy or sadness or something. And we allow it. It passes, and you just allow it to pass. And you don't take the time to process what it is you're thinking. And so that stays there and germinates, and it becomes festers, yeah? Festers is the better word. It festers and it becomes this thing. And only when it is too late, we try to grab back at it and take back, you know, everything that is happening, when the ball is already in motion. So in rereading the account of David and Bathsheba, I tried to get into David's head. And I'm reading the verses, and kind of trying, and I'm not adding. I'm just trying to get a little context to see, okay, this David who the whole time, he was, you know, pleasing God. The whole time, he was doing the will of God, and he was going through, and he was going really well. Still a example, still is a stellar example, despite what he did. And he allowed something that was so... What should have been trivial, I'm saying trivial and I'm putting air quotes, because you would think because of who David was, that would be beneath him. And because of everything that David had, it would be beneath him. But that is also a dangerous thing too, because it just goes to show you can't put anybody on a pedestal. We all sin, we all worship the glory of God, and it could happen to anybody. But you would think because of who David was, he wouldn't have fallen for this so easily. And so I tried to get into David, and I find out, well, where did this guy go wrong? What was it that made him think, okay, this is a okay thing to do? Ah, man, it's just somebody, I find that is, all of them are my servants anyway, so I might as well. I, according to Sister Mike, I want to believe that he, a little bit of pride got into him, and he didn't process that it was pride for a while. And by the time that tree of pride had gone up, he didn't even recognize, okay, this is an issue. And when we have little moments like this, or even when the thought, before the seed, the thought starts to grow in our minds, what we ought to do is process what is going on with us, and that requires standing still for a little bit. Sometimes we have the thought, and we just move, as if nothing was wrong, you know? But you have to stand still a little bit, shut up a little bit, quiet your mind a little bit, and process the thought that you just had. And after processing what the thought was, is you need to carry it to God, because he is the only one that will be able to deal with it thereafter. Don't try to fix it yourself, because you might one way or two mess it up even more. We need to allow God in learning from David's predicament. We need to allow God to help us through and to help us deal with the thoughts that we sometimes have. Because again, we are human. We are going to have them. I am not pretending with nobody. I have some thoughts that run through my head sometimes that I have to stop and process and really just come back. Because they, sometimes they take you to a ledge. Those thoughts take you to a ledge. And it requires that you wash a little bit and allow God to work and to process the emotion. Don't stuff down the emotion, because that makes it worse. Process the thought, accept that the thought has run through your mind, and then ask God to take care of it. So that's the first thing. And then I'm just gonna say this and allow somebody else to contribute. We are talking about how David went through, even after he committed adultery with Bathsheba. He, rather than accepting the sin that was, he decided to cover it up with deception and with lies. And if you know the game Tetris, which is the brick building game, Tetris starts off with a blank screen. And in the middle of the screen is a start button. Once you press that start button, the bricks start falling. And you know, they reach the bottom, and your job is to just kind of clear it up by matching the pieces and whatever. So they fall. But while you're clearing up the bricks, they never stop falling. And lying is like that. Once you press that start button on a lie, the bricks continue to fall, and they continue to fall. And you could clear up as much as you want. All it takes is one bad placement. And those bricks climb up, and then, well, eventually it's game over. So that's why God doesn't want us to lie, because he knows where it leads. He knows it builds up, and it builds up, and it builds up, and he just advises us to stay away altogether. Again, I think we really just need to kind of, I want to get into David's head, because David is such a... He's one of the better people in the Bible. And even though he's human, it kind of rocked in my brain that he allowed himself to reach at this point. But yeah, but I want to give other people a chance to contribute. So yeah, just gonna wash now and let somebody else raise any point. Wash now and let somebody else, um, raise any points that they would like to raise at this time.
Alright, since no one is joining in as yet. One of the things that I found when I was doing my little research. Is, um, that David already had three wives. When he went with Bathsheba. So, um, I, I kind of question, well then, what was the purpose? You've had three wives already. And then I went in a little to the history. And David's first wife was Saul's daughter. Michelle, I think it was her name. He was promised, um. The Saul's first daughter, who was Mirab. But he was not given her as a wife. He was given Michelle and he had to kill four hundred Philistine. And cut off their foreskins and that was in exchange for Michelle. That was the first one, which is kind of to me, when I looked at that, I said, well. How does that make sense? You had to kill so many people to get the foreskins in order to get this, this lady, was he, did he really? Want her for his wife? And then there was, um. What's her name? Abigail was one and Ahim, what's his name? And Ahinomah, Noam?
Ahinomah.
Ahinomah, right. And what, but I'm staying with Michelle because after a while Saul took. Michelle away from David. And he married her to another person by the name of Palteel. And when David became king, just to show that I could do what I want. He took Michelle away from her husband and what was really sad about that. Is that when he took Michelle from her husband and he brought her to the palace, to the palace. Her husband walked behind her and he was crying, weeping, crying and that didn't do anything to, to David. So he followed her crying, he took her away from her children and from her husband. So I don't know if there's something in there, I was reading, but I didn't come, couldn't put my finger on it, I don't know if there was something in there about these wives that he had. Why he felt that he could just take Bathsheba and do what he wants.
Now, I guess that goes back to the point I was making about allowing things to. To fester in, in your mind, I mean, I didn't, I didn't remember the account of Michelle and, and, I, I didn't remember that, otherwise it, the connection with me to this. Thing with Bathsheba, is he, yes, in the making, years and years and years, but I'm, I'm, I. No, I'm not gonna do that, but it's, it's years in the making and he never. Uh, but if, if, if it is that he. He, it started when Saul took her away from David. And then he, David, after he became king, he went back and, well, basically stole the people and wife. Could it be that David? Felt a little bit. In, is, wa- wa- was that insecurity happening there? In that he felt so emasculated by doing, by Saul doing what he did. And he never actually healed from that. And so he continued to carry that and now that he became, then when he became king, he decided, okay, well, I can do what I want now and nobody can ever make me feel. The way Saul made me feel ever again. Which is why we have to be very honest with ourselves when we do have. We, we love to accept the positive feelings, we love it. But when we have negative feelings, we tend to push them further down within ourselves instead of. Addressing it and addressing why it happened and allowing God to heal us from it from the beginning. And creates problems further down the road, so I think that was a little bit of. Insecurity on David's part that was planted by what Saul did and then it just festered and became this thing that he could not control. All the way down to Bathsheba. Uh, yeah, so, um, anybody else with anything?
Good afternoon to everyone on the platform. Am I audible?
Loud and clear.
Alright. Good afternoon to each and everyone, may God bless and keep us. Alright, so we discussing and. Um, we got into the, almost the middle of David's, um. Personal life without the, um. You know, in the beginning, but, okay, so, uh, I hope that the time will come and we'll go back to find out, um, what. Would have caused the, um, caused him to behave that way. Um, we have what you call culture and the culture at that time according to history. And the sixteenth episode of that, um, David's account says David's adultery. The notion of the East and that is culture we deliver with. In ancient and modern times has been that a well-filled harem. And when I, um, search the dictionary or Google that word. It meant that you have, um, what you call concubine and wives and, um, girlfriends. And that was the, 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 um. The essential to this, it was essential to the splendor of a priestly court. This opened up a dangerous precipice in David's way. And led to a most grievous fall. Walking upon the roof of his house, he saw a woman washing herself. The beauty of the woman excited David lost. And he inquired of his servant who she was. Bathsheba, the daughter of Eliam, the wife of Uriah, the Hittite. He was the reply, that was the reply he got, notwithstanding, she was the wife of another. David sent for her. And she appears voluntary. To have acceded to his sinful purpose. In order to cover up his sin and secure Bathsheba for his wife. David sent Uriah into battle under circumstances that caused his death. And thus added murder to his other crime. The cloud from this time gathered over David fortune and hence forward. The sword never departed from his house and we could look up that in seconds, Samuel eleven, one and, um, thirteen. Twenty-nine, so it was a culture. That in order to have yourself, um, or the court that you represent, because we know David. Was adopted in Saul's court. And as king, when he got that, um, break, um, to rule over Judah. He would have carried that culture with him for the, that to be if you have. Um, the more wife you have, that is what it really means. The more wife you have, it proves that you is a mature man. And that was one of the mistakes David made trying to live culture. But when we get further into this whole discussion, we're going to realize. That David never really. Was, um. Close to God, I mean, when I say close to God, as a young fella, he consulted God and I, why he was able to win the battle. But David never, it's only when David took the ark of the, um, covenant from the Philistine, now in Georgia, um, there. And decide to build a template, all them kind of things, is then he really understood. The realness of God, that, that time he had already committed this sin. And I'm giving others a chance to go through. What they thought process is in causing David to commit such an act and then I will read what the writer is saying to the end of it, why? God said afterwards, David is a man after my own heart, so I hope that, that clear up some of the thing, it was a cultier thing. That a traditional thing, a macho thing, that once you're the king, you had to have, the more wife you have. Is the more you, 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 you show status and David, all the good that he did, fell that there was the one instance. He fell short and that is why God never really punished him for that because it wasn't a regular thing. God bless you all.
In the last.
Uh, brother Mike, I didn't catch that last part that you, yesterday, so you wanna repeat that?
Right, so I was saying, it's a, it was a cultural thing when. A king got into position or that was the culture of the East. So that the more wife you have, concubine you have, girlfriends you have, is more macho. You seem to be, and David found himself in that, despite all that he did before. This one sin, this one thing that he did here. Caused him to fall in a pit that was responsible for his entire, because that resulted in murder. And that is why the sword never departed from his house, so I'm saying, because. He only had that one instance where he acted in this manner. Decide where God tell him you won't build my house because you was in Saul, um, um. Army fighting and your honest to bloody and this kind of thing, this one instance is what. When God told Nathan to deal with that situation. We, we never read nothing about, other than that when David went to ask God about why, um, the famine and God tell him, well, Saul's house had blooded. Because David was in that as well, so. I'm giving you all a chance to look at it and, um. I'll pick up from there when we get down further down to know why God didn't hold that. Or why God said David is a man after my own heart, because David did not continue in that behavioral pattern after that. So I rest there for now. Did I clear up what you wanted to hear, Sister Mike?
Yeah, no, I, no, no, I heard it, I heard it, thank you very much. Um, anybody else?
Anybody with that thought, just come forward, please, we just sharing and sharing alike and the more contribution we get is the more we could. Get around to. Finding out. Why David did this, so please, if you're on. However you feel it may sound. Just try and get it in, please.
Alright, so we, the whole purpose of the Bible study. Is not as we would regularly do it, just, this is just a reminder. This, these sessions are about, because we, because we do not have the advantage. Of at this time, an official teacher. We are trying to learn from one another. So even though Sister Mike and I. And other, uh, people like Brother Mike and Sister Ford and Sister Nidi. Even though the, we are the ones that would mostly be doing the talking. It is not that the session is left to us alone. Um, you're invited to make contributions as well as ask questions because. Be reminded that the church is a place of learning. It is not for you to just come and jump up and down and sweat up yourself every Sunday. It is primarily a place of learning and learning about God and the only way that you can learn is if you. Contribute verbally first of all, and if you ask questions, if you don't know. Or if you read the accounts and you don't know, um, what to make of it. Here's where you can ask your question, so even if you don't have any points to share. You can ask a question and it can be cleared up, if not in the moment, I guess just after. So all I have to say, um, please do not feel intimidated by what is being said. It is not that I have the world of knowledge, God has given me a smart. And I am trying to use it to the best of my ability. Um, Sister Mike always says that she's not that she is so wise, but because. She has consulted, she often consults God before she comes and says what she has to say. Right, as, as would every, everybody else who normally contributes, so you don't have to speak. As, as in make a point or make this profound point, if you have a question, please feel free to ask the question and if we can answer you right away. We will get back to you the following week. Right, on the next session. Um. So that being said. I want to kind of touch on. David, this, the, because, you know, you read the account of David or in some instances, the account of David is read to you. Because a lot of the times when you're coming up. You, you just depend on the preacher more or less and that stems from somewhere to where. Um, from, whether it's from us learning to just kind of sit in church and, and taking what the, what the pastor has to say. Um, because it's tradition, so we never really, most of us, a lot of us. Crack open our Bibles and try to understand for ourselves. Or to, to ask God for ourselves what his word means. Um, and whether or not. Whether or not, you know, we, we. We're interested or not, we just kind of sit back, because we feel as if we are the congregation and it's have a pastor and the pastor's job is to know and we is just soaking every day. Um.
It's changed.
Yeah, that is what we want to change, that is all we want to change and that's why we do in the Bible study in, in this week, right, but. In rereading David's account, and in coming weeks, we'll be, we'll be asking you all to do some heavy reading because David is long, the account of David is very long. In rereading David's account, we realize that we miss a couple of things, so we get the story of the David and Goliath, oh, that was great, fantastic. We got the story of when he, he went to this, oh, gosh, I can't remember the name of the place, but. When he got his second wife, Abigail, what was her husband's name again? I can't remember his name, but when he, he went and he did that and the guy was, the guy was wicked to him or whatever. And he ended up taking her as well and then we had, you know, the whole issue of when he was, um, dancing and his wife wasn't too happy about that, so, same Michelle. Right, so we have all these little tidbits of stories, accounts and. We have this picture of David in our heads that may need to. Be adjusted to fit who he actually was. Um, so again, I never knew about the whole. Scene with, with Michelle and how they came to be. And so that adds another dimension to David for me, in that we realize that, yeah, he really had some. Yeah, he was a man after God's own heart, we accept that, we accept that because God said it and if you want to fight, go right ahead. But. It adds another dimension to David for me. And realizing that even though he was a man after God's own heart, he had his problems. And he was, he was very much human. And it, yet it didn't stop David from being a man after God's own heart, which only points back to the grace of God. Right, so little things like that. Which only points back to the grace of God, right? So little things like that, instead of. Sto- instead of making the Bible characters are so much of a story and making it, making them seem so inaccessible. Yeah, making them these heroes, we need to bring them a little closer to, to, to who they are. Right, and learn from them as well as realize that as they were, we could be. God could use us in some powerful ways, right? Um, so anybody else?
Sister Kushel, um, I really, I, 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 I agree with you that, um, not those of us who are accustomed talking. You know, because I was trying to allow others, um, it's so much, it's, it's so much we could learn. From the account of David, um, Brother Mike told us about, you know, the culture, the east at the time. I am seeing that same culture playing out in our world today. Where we could say this is a male dominated world, because we, we cannot separate. For me, we cannot separate what happened with Bathsheba and rape victims on the whole. You know, and it, 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 it gives us a chance to really see how rape victims. What, what rape victims have to deal with. We have to teach them to love themselves, because many times, you know, they, they, they. They, they, they blame themselves or what may have happened, and we have to remember too, there is rape even in marriages. You know, it is so much for us to learn from the account of David, and, and God is really wise. If I, if I didn't know what God said, if I, if I didn't know what God said, he, he said, David is a man after his own heart. If I had just read all these accounts and didn't understand that, you know, we, you, you deal with the character of God. I would not have even thought about David being the, you know, being elevating David. You know, as a, as a good, as a good believer, as a good Christian, you know, it's so much, it's so much for us to. To deal with, but thanks to God, we, God is not like us, God is not like us at all. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Sister Ford, exactly, um, and I was going to leave this alone, but. Yeah, you, you touched again, so I have to touch it. So we talked about, Brother Mike mentioned that the culture of the east was about being. Or if the fact that David had a harem, that, that was a, a, yeah, it was a polygamous society, a society that put, supported polygamy. And it was a sign of how mature you were, how manly you could be. You know what we call that kind of behavior now? It's referred to as being toxic.
Mm-hmm.
It was a very toxic culture, and a lot of men. When we describe some of these behaviors as toxic, they get, oh boy, they get mad. They get very offended, and it's because, it's because that is what they were. Taught that a man was, they were never given what the right way to be have. So the, the culture that, that was, is, and unfortunately, probably will be. Is that being a man meant having multiple women, being a man meant hating your wife. Well, well, marrying a woman, but not liking her, and there's a difference, there's a whole topic by itself. You can love somebody and absolutely not like them, and that is very toxic. But let me, let me leave that point there, because that does set me off, anyway.
Yeah, women like trophies, you know?
Yes, 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 you, you love her, you marry her, whatever, but you don't like the person you're. Always complaining. That is toxic, and it, I mean, I have to say this because I know it will have people, but. It goes both ways, but it's what, it's, it's, it's male, it's, um, it's generally. A male thing, I'm not saying women don't do it, women do it, but it's generally a male thing. So hate, um, not liking your, your, the person that you're married to, you know, um. Treating women as, as nothing, you know, making them seem like they, they subservient when God created them to be. Your partner, you help me, that was the whole purpose of being a helpmate, help, not serve, help. And all these little toxic behaviors that, that was the culture at the time. We can't, we can, we can go hard and we, at the same time, we can't go too hard, because that is what, that is what men are taught. That being a man means doing certain things, and they don't realize sometimes how destructive the behaviors are. So, we, what, what can we gather from that? We can gather that David was very much, again, human like us, um, but at the same time, the toxic culture. Just never went away, it just never ended. And I think the church has to take some wraps on the knuckles for that, because we should have been as. People of God directing the society in the way that God, because God is, God is, despite how my, how people try to frame him. God is not toxic, um, God knows how to be. Because Jesus was only, that he was very much a decent human being, he included women in everything that he did. Matter of fact, some of his closest followers were women, and he treated them well. And yet we still have men who can't seem to grasp the fact that women are people too, as crucial as that sounds. So, I mean, yes, we have a toxic culture, but we as a church needed, needed to be at the forefront. And still need, still because we have a chance, we still here. So we need to be at the forefront of correcting the notion of what being a man is, because. And then I know wherever it is, the teaching meant to be out there is, it ain't it, it is not working. And we could see from the headlines that it is not working. Um, so, um, yeah, that, that was, that whole idea of being a macho man. It needs to be corrected, and I guess we could start learning from David, who was still after a man, a man after God's own heart, and a toxic person. Anybody else?
Sister Kush, um, what we have to look at in this whole scenario. And feel as we may feel, because we are now cultivated into the Christian. Being of thought, where you married one wife, I mean, this is what it was in the beginning. But because Christianity was not introduced as the Christ had come as yet. The, that behavior up to today, up to today, you have it in the. Mohammed, Mohammedism, um, religion, where it is alright to have three and four. What we still have that today in that culture. So even though Christ came so long after and set the notion, because remember. They went to Christ with that, you know, they went and asked him, if a brother married, and he didn't have no children, and they reach up to seven. Whom wife she is, and she would be in the resurrection. And they were saying, he was, um, Christ was telling them it wouldn't have that there, so I'm just showing you that that culture. Was well established around that time where people could have more than one wife. And if you notice what happened, when that happened, he took her to wife and he asked her. Well, as a matter of fact, when he slept with her, it meant that from then on, she would have been his. It was not legal for her husband to be living and David owner, hence the reason why he committed murder. Let us say she didn't have a husband, and David had his wife. That would not have been recorded, because David had other wife as well, but he didn't commit murder. But what stood out here is because he committed, he had a crime to the crime that he had already had on his shoulder. He committed murder, and that is what, um, made it the problem. But it wasn't a problem then, everybody could, it was alright in that time. We know it different now, and we on that Christian teaching, and we know it's to have one wife, but that was also when Christ come. That is what Christ came to set straight, Christ came to let them know, this wasn't the original plan. Everybody have his own wife, let everybody have his own wife and, and this kind of thing. So we deal with a problem where. The religious circle still have it, as it's alright, because it's still in the Old Testament, people have not. Um, let go of the Old Testament paths that they like, and that is the problem we have in the world today, God bless.
Where's Nady? Um, I. I want to, because I don't want to still walk away with this idea. That because Christianity didn't exist, is why. You know, things were happening the way that they were, and I'm gonna give a very thing example. In fourteen ninety-two, was it? Uncle Chris, Uncle Chris?
Yeah.
Wonderful. In fourteen ninety-two, there was a man called Christopher Columbus. And he was, well, he was Roman Catholic, and at the time, in the eyes of pretty much everybody. Roman Catholics were Christians. Christopher Columbus was not a nice man. And yes, we can argue that he was not actually following the, well. Let me just say that, because he was holding on to, you know, the fact that as a child of God. You had the authority to go and plunder everybody, and he, he and a lot of people didn't take into context that, you know. This was for, that was in a particular setting, right? When God gave that commandment, that was for a certain kind of people, for a certain kind of setting. God never tell nobody post Israel to go and kill nobody, take nobody's land, Jesus had already dealt with that. So I don't want to so far believing that because Christianity was not there. That it was the reason why David did it, it was solely because he was influenced by the culture of the day. Right, and he allowed himself to be a part of. And while, while, and, and stand, understand the whole thing of context and culture and context, I understand that, and. Because we're here and he's there, we would see it in a different light, but at the same time, um. It's not just because Christianity didn't exist, it's simply because he. At a point stopped allowing God to, to. Direct him in what he was doing, and he allowed himself to become completely engrossed in whatever our culture was. So I wouldn't, I would be very careful to take not to Christianity too much. Um, I think it was just David letting the culture influence him and not God, but that's me. Anybody else?
How much time we have again?
Yeah, about three minutes.
Right, so you know, we, we, we not wrapping up, um, okay, just, just a thought for next week, please God. So that when we come back on, we could have something to work with, good. So we was dealing with, um, David's, um, behavior. That auto-aligned with character, so we deliver David character now. It says if we proceed to put together in its most general features. The whole picture of David, which results from these historical testimony, and we talk about all what he did. We find the very foundation of the character to be laid. In particular, in a particularly, um, particular form, and on a shaking trust in Jehovah. And the brightest and most spiritual view of the creation and government of the world. Together with a constant tender and sensitive awe of the Holy One in Israel. Is simple, pure striving, never to be untrue to Him again. And the strongest effort to return to Him, all the more loyally after errors. And transgression, his mouth continuously overflows with heartfelt praise of Jehovah. And his actions are ever redolent of the nobility inspired by a real. And living fear of God for the errors by which he is carried away. Stand out permanently just because of their rarity. So what the writer is saying here, just as we, people come in the church with a colorful past. And that is what we have to look at, that is why I add a Jordan analogy with this Old Testament belief. And we have some people willfully staying in it because it allows them to do anything and feel comfortable. We have people come, had colorful past and come into our church and get baptized, and you know it have people still pointing. Finger of scorn at them and telling them, that is who they are. What the writer is saying here, because David's sins was rare. God could have said after that, because David stopped practicing that kind of behavior, and his. Whole intention was to please God, and there is where it makes the difference with. Passing judgment upon what he did when he was a king, as to when he now becomes a writer for God. And a person who's building kingdom, building, um, the tabernacle of God. And that's why God tell him, you can't build my temple, because you had all these things on your hand, Solomon, your son will build it. Nevertheless, when God, when God shines upon us, and I'm not saying it's okay to do that, but that is what it is. Because the system wasn't fixed, that is why Christ had was the king, what had was to come. And up to today, we have people fighting it and telling you that is still so, because they only business with the Old Testament. So if we have a colorful past like David, and you're ready to drop it off. God holds nothing against you. Unfortunately, that was the behavior of the day, and we trust and we hope that by our. Educating ourselves in this, um, subject, with the subject David, that we will be able to. Tear clear from these behaviors, and don't fool ourselves with that, Sister Kushel. We have a lot of David, we have a lot of David in, in the Baptist faith now, we have a lot of David. In the Baptist faith even up to today, you know, ministers, you know, God bless you, I said no more on this until next week, please God, God bless you.
Yeah. Somebody speaking, Sister Ford, God Sister Ford.
No, I was just, I was just going to say, I am so thankful for God and who He is. Because we're really not supposed to look at our past, long as we repent, we truly repent. And God is able to really, really forgive us. We thank God for His grace and His mercy. Because we really can't point fingers, we have to understand what went on before because of the culture. And we really have to thank, we really. And we really have to thank, we really, we really in a place where we can thank God for his grace and his mercy. That we have a, we have a chance to do what is right, to live according to God's holy law.
Alright, yes, it needs to support. And with that, we're just going to, because it's eighteen minutes past seven. And we were supposed to be out of here by seven fifteen, right? Um so this week was relatively. Quiet for us. Um but I know that now we know that we can ask questions and participate that. The next time that we meet here, we will all be able to participate. In the coming weeks, we will post little readings for you all to do, so. Um keep your eyes out in the group chat and we will talk more about David and try to see what we can learn from him. So with that, I will hand back to Sister Ford, who will close us up this evening.
Thank you, Sister Keshel and Sister Mike and Pamela. I am always excited. When we have Bible study, I'm always excited because. I am always ready and willing to learn, you know, and I think. I'm I'm glad that um Brother Mike, you know, informed the the platform, those of the platform, that they are free to. Make the contributions, suggestions and whatever else, you know, we are here to learn in the absence of of of, you know, our leader. We are here to learn and we have been learning, we have been learning. So we want to thank. All of us this evening, all of us who have been here. Sister Keshel, Sister Pamela, thank you all for, you would have done your research. In order to put forward information. God continue to bless you all. I don't know if Sister Marlin is ready to speak or if I should just close off. Sister Marlin, do I? Alright, it seems as though um I have to do this. So Father God, we are just grateful for yet another Bible session. Father God, and we pray for the boldness of speech. Next time we we gather, those who have ideas and are. Timid to come forward with it, Father, we just pray for that boldness, Lord. We thank you for those who made a contribution. Thank you for those who did their research, Lord, and was able to put forward information that even I didn't have. You know, so Lord, we thank you. We bless you this evening. We give you praise, we give you honor. And Lord, we ask that you continue to keep us in safety. We ask, Lord, that we continue. You continue to bless homes and families, Father, those on the platform and those who are not able to be to join us. We pray, God, that you will continue to be in our streets, in our communities, in our homes, take a full residence, Father. Lord, and even in our churches, we pray, God, that you will do what needs to be done in our churches, Lord, so that your word and your. Your church will go forward. Father God, we just bless you. We honor you. We say glory to your matchless name. And Lord, we continue to pray for Sister Marson at this time that your healing hands will touch her, Father. Whatever it is, Father, you have the healing balm in Gilead and we know, and we can trust you for continued healing. Father God, we just bless you this evening. And we say, great is thy faithfulness towards us. As we go to, as we suffer from one another on this platform, we know, Lord, that we will not suffer from your love. And from your mercy and from your grace. We pray, Lord, and we ask you to remember Avancant too at this time and all those who need healing. At this time, we thank you. We bless your name. And we say glory to your matchless name. We ask all these favors in no other name but in Jesus. Almighty name. Now may the saving grace of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the love of God and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit. Rest and abide with us all now and forevermore. Amen and amen.